Good evening, everybody. It is 6:30, so I will call the July 15th meeting of the Superior Common Council to order. Please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Counselor LeDene.
Here.
Counselor Anderson.
Here.
Vice President Moffett.
Here.
Counselor Sweeney.
Here.
Counselor Fennessy.
Here.
Counselor Elm.
Here.
Counselor Ludwig.
Here.
Vice President Herrick.
Here.
Counselor Johnson, could you just check in one more time?
I'm gonna, I checked him just before the meeting. I'm gonna mark him as present, and then we'll double-check if we have a split vote.
And President Graski.
Here.
Item 3.1 is a presentation on the initial design of the new fire station number two. I'm gonna get that set up.
So there's no objection, I'll welcome up the Fire Chief.
Good evening, counselors. Mayor, you all know me. I brought with our architect, and I'll let him introduce himself, and then we'll get started.
Good evening, I'm Robert Krzyszczynski, the Director of Emergency Services for 1015 Bugles Design. So I'm the principal in charge for your project, so.
So tonight, we're here to present on what we've had so far for the preliminary designs for the replacement of Station 2. We presented last week at Plan Commission. They approved the roof structure. We were looking for some guidance on that before we got some pricing for it. As a background, when we get into this design, is what we're looking at for our fire station is including a bunch of goals that we had set forth. First goal would be firefighter physical and mental health. So designing a building that would help us with cancer prevention, rest and recovery for our firefighters between calls, the ability to provide physical fitness areas for them, to provide healthy diets when they're on duty, and a safe environment from outside entities. We also wanted to provide high-level emergency services for the next 60-plus years that this building will be in service. So modernizing our apparatus space to support our modern fire trucks, supporting level-one EV charging, so we can have 480-volt fast charging, roomful for additional staffing, should our mission change or expand through the future in the years of service this building will be around, modern dispatching systems, so increasing dispatching system so information is provided to our firefighters the instant they get dispatched. Designing a highly efficient building is high on the list. So providing a solar array, alternative heating sources such as geothermal, and producing a very efficient envelope so the building is thermally efficient. Also important is design a building that fits and enhances the neighborhood that it's gonna be in. So the building will move to one block to the west of the current location, so between 7th and 8th, fronting on John Avenue there. Provide a space for the citizens to use, so having a community room and an opportunity to have some community art displayed in those areas. And also provide space for other city operations, including training and meeting spaces, IT and fiber hub, as well as some additional office areas. So Robbie is gonna walk through kind of the design and layout in the building, and then we can field some questions.
Is it possible just to drive on here with the mouse and stuff? A little closer here for me. Yeah, it's a little easier than a laser pointer in the end. So just to kind of give a little bit of debrief on where we are in the process right now, you'll see from the plans, it's very conceptual at this point. You know, there's no doors, walls, windows. You know, I would say 5% done, right? So we met with the department a few months ago, programmed, you know, that's basically going through any room that we've ever done in any fire station in the last 15 years, and just asking the questions, right? Because the last thing we want to do is get through this entire process and forget a specific space. So we go through, ask all the various questions of every room, you know, how many people do you want in a training room, how many dorm rooms do you want, how many people in a day room, what size apparatus. Essentially creates this list, and then we go back and to the office and then create this conceptual plan. So you'll see right now, all the concepts in front of you are pretty much just lines and spaces. You know, you'll see some flow with arrows. We're starting to think about that as we lay it out. But really, this concept stage right now is, you know, like I said, about 5%. The square footage is there. We had KA do a feasibility analysis on, you know, the budget to make sure we were fine before we go there, you know, so we're still within that $10 million of where the project would be feasible. And so the next stage really is to put more pencil to paper, get a lot more detail, and then let them do an official estimate, right, where they're sending it to contractors. We're getting a lot more detail in the, in everything. And we give them written descriptions of what the mechanical systems will be, the electrical systems, the plumbing systems, what's the exterior look like. A lot more detail in that next stage where they'll put, put their pencils together and tightening up those numbers. The other thing that we have going on right now in our firm is we bid a fire station last week. We bid, we're gonna bid a station tomorrow, and then we have actually the Cloquet Fire Station, which will be bidding in August. So a lot of real-time data coming in for all of you when we, going through this design process and what these buildings cost. So that's good news. Just looking at the plan here, I think I'm gonna start with the site plan, because I think that's probably easiest. So really, what you're looking at here is you have John Avenue, North 8th Street, and North 7th Street. We are going out on the apparatus. When you look at the plan, we'll be responding on to North 8th Street, and then returning from North 7th Street down the alleyway there, and then going in. So it is a drive-through bay capacity is what we're doing there. We have some parking on John Avenue. A majority of the other parking is on the north side off of North 7th and a parking lot. And then we'll have some spots here for training or various stormwater management that will be requirement on the project. So really, really simple again, concept layout. Next phase, you'll start seeing grading plans. You'll start talking about utilities and power and various other things, but very, very conceptual at this particular point. So coming in, right now, when you look at the plan off of Johns Avenue, it's exactly how it's for, laid out on the site is how you see it here. We have a vestibule. We come in, this will be your main entry into the facility, and we have a lobby. Off of that lobby, then, we'll have a training room. Again, on numbers, it's hard to see there. No, can't really zoom. Maybe I can. There we go. Zoom in to make it a little easier. So we got a training room. You can kind of see the amount of square, or amount of seating in there, a community room as well. So you'll see a lot of different various amenities with that. So we've got, I'm not used to working here on this program, but off that lobby, we've got two toilet rooms, you know, ultimately to serve this public area, I guess you would say, a janitor's closet to serve that public area, and a mother's room off of that lobby. So really, the community area, and you can see where we have doors, you know, restricting access to the rest of the fire department, but really just allowing access to that community space with a small kitchenette on the back end of the facility. As you kind of go through, then we've got a little utility room out the back, you know, water service room where we'll bring in some water and various other utilities for the building, some exterior storage, you know, for lawnmower, shovels, so on and so forth, and then just storage off of that community room where we'll have, you can put tables and chairs, put them away in case we have a larger training event inside of this room, clear all the tables out, put everything away, or various training needs in that storage room. As we kind of go down, then, this becomes a little bit of an admin suite where we come in through from the public area into a hallway where we've got two captains' office, and then we have the IT room, and then a four-person workplace with two fire inspectors off of that area there. And then an exit, exterior exit coming here. So a lot of probably parking in the back, coming in this door, you know, having access for these offices, whether this is a coated key-carded door. So certain staff can still come into that yellow area, but again, we could look at, you know, on the fire department side, how do we keep them, you know, separate on the living quarter side. As you move down, we have a fitness room, and when we kind of get into the exterior elevations in the upper floor plan, you'll see we're bringing some upper clear-story windows into that fitness space with a overhead door going out onto that apparatus bay. We have four, four dorm rooms that kind of go down the entire plan. I'll kind of stay in the living portion quarters of it. As we get to the bottom of the plan, then, another vestibule, we have kitchen dining area, and then a day room. Off of that area is a watch office. This kind of becomes the, the hub, I guess, of the station. We see this happening a lot in all of our stations where this becomes where they're writing reports, having meetings, doing some various trainings at the big table. But it kind of becomes the hangout where you can ultimately see the front apron of the entire apparatus bay, but also see into So then after that, you have the apparatus bay. Zoom out a little bit here. See, we're doing four bays, three and a half bays, I guess you could say. Those are three of them, our drive-through feature. We have an EMS storage, a hose storage, and then a small workshop for various tools to support the department. Then as, as the chief mentioned, cancer prevention is one of the hot topics right now in fire station design. So I like to call this the firefighter car wash, right? You come back from an incident, you have your PPE and all your gear. You come into this decon suite. We have a drop zone where they'll drop their, their equipment, their, their gear. Start getting that cleaned up, you know, have it go through the gear washer, the extractor, you know, washing it up in the various sinks, you know, having the gear dryer and SCBA washer, really keeping those contaminants in this decon suite. And once they're, you know, out of their PPE, they then head into this decon hall where we'll have a set of lockers where they can have some uniform in that, you know, 12-by-12 locker where they can then grab that clothes and not have to go all the way back in the dorm room with potential contamination, and be able to go into then these decon toilet showers and clean themselves after that fire incident, and then kind of come out the other side on the dorm rooms. So in the design world, you have the hot zone, which is the apparatus bay, the yellow zone, and then you have the cold zone when you get to the other side. So a lot of process here, just going through that, and it's really as good as, you know, the department does it, right? This is something that's new. You know, we, we designed your headquarters station in 2019 or 2017. I can't remember right now.
Finished in 2019.
Finished in 2019. Designed in 2017. This was just coming out then. So you can see how, you know, state-of-the-art things change as we move forward. And then last but not least, on this floor plan, you can kind of see there is a set of stairs that go up to a mezzanine. So that mezzanine will be for various, you know, storage and so on and so forth, but it does offer some of those low-frequency training events. You know, we have a, an opening through the wall that they can do ladder training on. We have a mezzanine that's, you know, a guardrail that it can be opened to the bay, and they can do various training on that. But then having that mechanical room all upstairs on the, on the second story, I guess you could call it, but very small upstairs, more of a mechanical and storage-based upper floor. So in kind of paging through, you'll see, you know, some various options on exterior renderings. Again, still conceptual, so these are pretty crude, but as we move forward, they'll define them a little better and, and kind of finalize them. But this is, would be looking from North 8th Street, looking north. So you can see the three bays, or four bays, three and a half bays. This would be your watch office in that corner, your day room, and your kitchen. Again, sticking with, you know, flat roof option, brick block facades, very similar to what you have at the headquarters station in regards to the exterior facade. Again, this would be looking from the parking lot or the northwest corner, looking southeast. So we've got, again, brick block, dressing up that main entrance a little bit so people can know that's where they go when they come and visit the station, keeping the other entrances low-key, and so you cannot have visitors coming in the wrong place. This would be looking from Johns, straight on. You can kind of see some of the windows that we've got up higher that are gonna be shining into that exercise room. I think right now in this elevation, they're probably a little high. They're gonna probably end up coming down and getting a little more compact as we go through this process. And this is sort of a sky view, looking down in that end there. Very conceptual, like I said, and by the time you see these again, they'll be more defined, but they're, they're definitely coming along. And then this is the view from the backside if you're driving in from 7th Street and returning. So, any questions? Or Chief, do you have anything else you wanted to make over?
Just looking for questions and feedback and comments.
Counselors, this is initial design phase, so right now, just soliciting your ideas and feedback. Final design will be a couple of weeks.
Yeah, months, yeah, by the time I get pulled through engineering, yeah.
Several weeks then. Counselor Herrick, please.
Yeah, just a couple of questions. Looks like a great design there, and I like the idea you're letting some natural light in, because that's a, that's a great, for lack of better words, mood inhibitor as far as making firefighters feel good. Just a question, I'm assuming that there's enough, with the apron and everything, that there's enough turn room for the fire trucks to get out on 8th Street?
Yep. Yeah, when they look at the building, they, we set it back far enough for visibility so they can clear that door and still be not on the street and have visibility going either way. But yep, turning radius will not be a problem coming out of there.
Okay, and I read, I read some, I think it was in Public Works Meeting, a flat roof versus a pitched roof. And can you tell me the decision to go flat? Because a lot of people think, why are you going with flat roof in this part of the country? So.
The, the flat roof, there's some benefits economically. It is a little less expensive from what I understand to install it. It is a little easier with our solar. When we have the flat roof like we do at headquarters, all of our solar panels are ballasted, so they, they put a sheet of polyethylene or plastic down. They put the, the panels down, and they actually have a weight on them. So there's no holes drilled in the building whatsoever for all those. If we did a pitched roof, especially with an east-west orientation, they'd have to be racked on there, drilled and anchored, and then facing a south at a pitch. So they would, they'd be very visible and change that design of the roof, plus putting thousands of holes in a, in a brand-new roof.
Sure. Is it gonna be like, if there's a lot of snow, I mean, is it accessible? I mean, what's, is there plans to get the snow off the roof then?
It would be very similar to the ones at headquarters, and what we saw through the two winters that we've had, is the snow doesn't last super-long on the panels themselves because they are, they do warm up, and they are dark, they are facing south.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Counselor Elm, please.
Thanks for the presentation. Looks like it's coming along nicely. I was curious in terms of this design, is it meeting all of the wish list that, that has been defined? Or were there certain things sacrificed perhaps due to the limitation of the land that's available? Or is this checking all the boxes? Is this the, the perfect fire station, I guess?
I, I think it's as close as we can get to perfect. It'll, it serves the needs that we have today, but it also allows expansion to serve the needs that we're gonna have in the future in that area. So building a building that, there's eight bunks in this current design, which four will be occupied right away. The idea is that we, looking, we may have some increase in density of housing, call volume in that area, would allow us to go to a second company, whether that's an EMS company or a fire company in the future without having to add on to the building. Including those in the design now would be less expensive than it would be to add it later. The other benefit of that is that we, we know we're gonna be limited with our response partners when our bridge goes down. And if we have a large winter storm or something coming in, it would allow us to call in extra staffing. So if we have a blizzard coming in, and we know we're gonna be shut down, the long bridge might be closed, we can bring in extra staffing on overtime for a period of time and have somewhere to house them, those folks.
Excellent. When you compare this building to HQ, what are, what are we missing? We have a fire tower at HQ, but does this really have a lot of similar capacities? This, this can house the larger emergency vehicles, kind of aligned with what Counselor Herrick had mentioned. I mean, we can, we don't have any limitations in terms of what can go in there, right?
No. The bays themselves would be the same size. We have less of them. There's only three full bays, but they're the same size as the ones at headquarters. And then the half bay would be for ARV or medical response pickup trucks. So it has a smaller door, smaller bay, which is another benefit of, if you get into the, the micro of a long service life is opening a door all winter long on a big fire truck. And if we only have to open a small door to get a pickup truck out, we actually save, save some heating costs there. The 14-by-14-foot doors, when they open up, they let a lot of heat out really quickly. So.
Thanks for that. What was the lifespan of, how, how long has been Fire Station 2 in service?
1981.
Okay. So this is gonna be a, a longer lifespan than what's currently there. What makes the difference there in terms of the design or the product used? Like, why, why did the current station only last as long as it did? And why is this one gonna be, last longer?
I think there are, construction technologies have improved greatly since that, that time period. And I'm not sure what the construction was or what the budget was when they built that building, but we're building this building in mind with the construction techniques that it's gonna last for a much longer period of time.
So no, no corners, no corners that have been cut on this. All right. Excellent. Thank you.
One extra response here, Counselor Elm. Well, my wish list and the Fire Chief's wish, wish list, and the firefighter's wish list has largely been met. They're still yours, so it's not too late to offer other suggestions that would improve not just this fire hall, but we were building, not just, not just rebuilding the north-end fire station, but a fire station. So if there's a way for us to improve the fire service or the presence of this public building in a neighborhood, now or the next few weeks is the time to say so.
Thank you.
Counselor Graski, I believe.
Oh, yes, thank you. Hi, sorry I wasn't at planning, so I'm really happy to have you here and look at this. And I'm really, really thrilled about the community center aspect. I think this sits in my district that I represent. So can you give me a little idea of what the plan might be for that community center and how that can kind of trickle into the community? I mean, overall for the city, but kind of that area specifically?
Yeah, when we looked at other fire stations and how they've utilized their community centers, this is kind of being, becoming a trend. It's more, we're building more of fire stations that include community and other aspects to it. So in the case of La Crosse's Fire Station, they had a, a room very similar in size, and the people, the community members were able to rent that out. They have a specific list of things they can use it for and things they can't use it for. But if we were having, let's say the Elks had a move for a reason, they have a meeting, they had a flooding or basement or something, they'd be able to utilize that facility for a rental cost. It works on a key code. Say, they would simply be handed a FOB or a key code that's viable for the time what they rented the facility for, including a punch list of things they'd have to do when they're done, take out the garbage, whatever it happens to be. And then they would have a deposit, and that deposit we returned, once the building was looked at and make sure that everything else was in line. But whether it's for a polling place, whether it's for a DNR meeting, whether it's for some other community aspect or community group that meets there, and then on emergency situations, as we've, we've had a warm summer. We've had days where we've had heat ex, indices that are approaching triple digits, which is unusual for us. In our city, as a lot of our places do not have air conditioning, and some of our folks, especially the elderly, are susceptible to heat, especially when those heat days start piling on top of each other. We'd be able to use this facility as a cooling center if we needed to, because of the air conditioning in the building.
I love that. I, I think there's been a huge request from that area to bring a community center back. A couple of them that have been kind of conditioned at in the 90s and the early 2000s, I believe, have closed. And so I'm just, I was really, really happy to see that. And I, I know that this thing, once people are in it, it'll kind of make its own sense and, and find its own rhythm. So I just wanted to say thank you for incorporating that and thinking about the community, as well as providing, obviously, just really nice and core amenities for, for our department. So thank you.
Counselor Sweeney.
Thank you. The current fire station is how old?
It was built in 1981.
81, okay. 25, 35, okay. So it's not, by buildings, it's not very old.
No.
Okay. So you say this is a building with new material, although there are buildings that are far older than 45 years.
Mm-hmm.
So what materials, other than I would agree in 25 years, there's new, probably better ways to do things and better materials. But on the other hand, there's buildings that are 100 years old, okay? They're still standing, pretty good shape, especially in Europe. So how, are you putting an age on this building? Are you saying in, you fill in the number, X years, that we're gonna be doing this again?
I would hope based on our plans, the design, the size of the building, the capabilities of building, plus the construction, should be service life of 60-plus years.
How?
Yeah, I would agree.
How long?
60-plus.
50?
60.
That isn't very old in building life. So you're saying that we're gonna outlive it by the, by the new, by technology and whatever's gonna change so drastically? Or you're saying the building, many times I've heard the building is just simply, ah, it's cheaper to tear it down and build a new one, okay? And so my question again, you're saying, so could you, with advancements, whatever, what if somebody said, go back and come back to me with a 75-year-old building? Could you do that?
I, I think you're probably in that range.
You could?
That 60-to-75-year range is where you would be.
All right, I'll say I said come back a 100-year building.
You look at, you look at the, you look at the apparatus bay. I mean, it's gonna be CMU, right?
You could do that, though, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I mean, I.
So we picked, we've, we've accepted a 50-year obsolescence in this building. So knowing, I mean, roughly, somewhat.
I don't think the obsolescence, depending on the building, and there's a lot of things that go into a building, how long it lasts, from, from soil type, from weather. But as far as obsolete for the fire service, the reason why we have the bays that we do along with the additional staffing capabilities is that it doesn't go obsolete in the terms of serving the fire department. The building construction, it'll be this guy to answer.
I mean, ultimately, you're building, you're spot on. I mean, a building, a building could last 100 years like some of them do, right? But when you look at the 80s and the various things that went on in the 80s, it's far different than what it is today.
I accept it. But going back, there are, you will certainly admit there's buildings older than 50 years old.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, fine.
I think, Counselor, one of the, we could, we can build a building that can last 1,000 years. It's a matter of cost. And so if we're about to, I can't remember, we're either about to or have celebrated the centennial of the courthouse next door. There's a number of churches that, that have lasted 100 years and may go hundreds of years more. They're, they're made out of materials and a form of construction that can last the ages but is extremely expensive. So we'd be adding tens of millions of dollars to the cost.
But my point is, we made a decision it's gonna last 50, right?
60-plus.
Okay, so let's move on from that. My next question is, after you've designed a building, fire stations, and I assume you've designed a number of them, right?
Mm-hmm.
Have you gone back within one year, say a year and a half, to the, once you've designed and talked to the people, and they say, my question would be, if you could change anything, what would it be? Has that question been asked, and have you ever had answers to that?
I can kind of give you the, you know, I've personally done 150 fire stations.
Okay.
So every lesson learned on every station is brought to the next one, right? So I think that's definitely something we do. I mean, even a one-year walkthrough, that's, that's common in the practice that we'll walk through with the chief on the 11th month anniversary, because you get that one, one-year warranty. You could get a two-year warranty if you wanted to ask for that, right? So I mean, we, we learn right away, like, ah, wish we would've did this different. I wish we would've did that. You know, just like anybody who's gone through a house process and built their own house, there are little things like that that they learn, and we bring it up to them as we go through the process, so.
But you're the expert, okay? You would come to us, I think, and say, did you think of this? And then the city would say, we thought of that, thank you, but we don't, we can't afford that, we don't want that, we don't think that's practical, all those. The right to say no.
Yeah.
We don't want a surprise and say, if only we would've put in five garage bins when, okay, very simple.
That is really a lot in the next process, where, you know, 5%, we still have 95% left to go. So there's a good 1,000 hours left of us working on this yet. So a lot, a lot more meetings with the chief in, in the coming months here.
So my last question would be then, innovation, change, looking to the future, how do you do that for the fire station?
So when we programmed the, the fire station, we did a lot of talk, and we want you to put your crystal ball, you know, and get that going, and think 20 years ahead, right? What, where is this gonna take you in the 20 years? And I think that's probably a lot of stuff that you're seeing with the chief, and having a few extra dorm rooms in there, you know, for something that may come on, maybe having an extra office in there in case something happens. Really thinking about, you know, where that went, living through a station design and build five, six years ago. I'm sure there's things in that building that he's gonna tell us on this one, like, yeah, we did that there, let's do that here, right? So really, in that programming phase in regards to the space, we, we talk a lot about the future and making sure that we're thinking about the future, but obviously budget and future, and we have to find that middle ground in the end.
One thing I read about schools being designed on this, this current atmosphere, some of the school districts are building a building with, assuming populations change and schools close, they've innovated them to plan them and put in construction materials or walls or what, potential footings or whatever, when it's gonna be converted to apartments. Is that, and?
I mean, when you look at this facility right now, all of the walls on the exterior will be brick and steel studs. All of the inside walls will be drywall steel studs. So there'll be columns, beams, you could, you could alter that very easily.
Easily make a change, okay. Thank you.
More realistically, Counselor, the, the space is meant to be somewhat flexible in terms of its use and, and would likely adapt to other city administrative uses. So in the event that we didn't need all of the existing space for pure fire, in fact, we're building in space for other city administrative services, it would, this is the closest city-owned building to this building here. So it's a potential opportunity. building to this building here. So it's a potential opportunity if our needs in this building change in the future. There'll also be a little bit more space around it to build out. And also, I should say, I was also created in 1981, so I appreciate you saying that that's not that old.
Well, when I'm almost, almost twice as old as the building, then-
Counselor Anderson, please.
Hi, first question asked. So basically, we're not going to grow out of the building before we move into it, before you guys move into it?
Yes, that was one of the goals, is to make sure that it is not becoming obsolete operationally before the paint dries on the wall, yeah.
Further questions, Counselor Fennessy?
Want to go back to the, the flat roof versus the pitch roof. And I know we, I know we talked about this at the Plan Commission, and, you know, at the Plan Commission, we were looking at this kind of like through the, through the design lens where, you know, which one do you like better? And I just happen to like the, the look of the pitch roof, but I don't have a strong enough opinion to, you know, to fight you guys on that from a design perspective. And so, design aside, I wanted to get your thoughts on the, the long-term cost versus the short-term cost of the, you know, the pitch versus the flat. And the, the reason I bring that up is because I had a friend reach out who, up until a couple years ago, owned a pretty large commercial building here in Superior, and a portion of it was, was flat, the other portion was, you know, was sloped. And, and he had indicated that mostly because of our climate with the freeze and the thaw and the weight of snow and then the melt of the snow and, and all that, that he had considerably more headache and, you know, maintenance cost and all that with the flat portion versus the pitch portion. And so after, you know, after I talked to him, then I reached out to, to Ryan Nelson from PNR Properties, who they, every one of their most recent builds have all been, you know, flat roofs. And, and so he had, he had indicated that he has zero hesitation with the flat roof. The downfall to that is that the shorter life of a flat roof, like, you know, 25 years-ish, instead of, you know, if you do like a standing seam metal, it's basically bulletproof. And, and so I wanted to get your, you know, get, get your thoughts, your experience on, on these, because obviously the, the flat roof would be, would be cheaper, right? And then it's cheaper and then, you know, also provide, you know, an easier way to, to do the, like, the solar. Is it, is it considerably cheaper upfront, but that will cost the city considerably more in the future? Or is it a lot cheaper upfront that 'll, you know, that might, might cost a little bit more down, down, down the road?
Yeah, I can talk a little bit about flat and, and slope roofs, right? So I would say probably 90% of the roofs that we put on these types of facilities are flat just because of the sheer size. You know, so you can imagine the big apparatus bay, and you start on one end and you start going up. At some point, it gets to a height. Here, you're, with that three bays, it's a little different because we're not doing like headquarters, right, where you got five, six bays, and it just goes on forever, and the slope would go, and the peak would be up to no, you know, up to nowhere, right? I think the big difference with flat roofs, though, on how we're doing them, is you're, you're writing a pretty tough spec, right? You're, you're only doing certain manufacturers that train their individuals that are putting them in, and they have a rigorous program, whether it's Carlisle or Firestone, you know. So I think that's a big difference in the commercial world because, you know, someone else may be like, "Give me a roof," and they don't know necessarily what they're getting. The mill thickness might be different, the insulation might be different, the details may be totally different. But, you know, so I, I have stations that are 15, 20 years old, and I haven't heard from anybody that's put a new roof on yet. So, and again, I was 78, I wasn't 81. But ultimately, I think it's a great product, and it's, it's a lot of what the schools and everything that you're seeing commercially goes on. That being said, standing seam roof, you get what you pay for, you know. It does add substantial cost. I can't remember if we had KA do the difference, but it did add enough cost that we wanted to bring it to that meeting to say, "Okay, there is a substantial difference here." And I think everyone kind of agreed. They, they liked both of them in the end, and that's why they went with the flat, which we're totally, totally on board with. And again, the solar panels, if you put them at that flat roof, you won't necessarily see the standing seam. You'll see the solar panels, which, good, bad, that's all up for you to necessarily decide. And then the other thing on standing seam metal roofs that we've run into in the past is just no slide, right? On a flat roof, it stays up there or it just blows off. On a standing seam roof, you can hear the stories of it sliding off the roof and coming down and getting on your sidewalks and maybe hitting vehicles on certain buildings that might have parking stalls too close. This one doesn't, obviously. But I mean, you have that worry on that heavy event with that snow up there. Now, with the solar panels up there, it might stay up there, but then you're worried about loading and how much snow gets up there and doesn't want to come down, and now you're having to go up there and take it off, right? So up here, that's kind of a worry of mine. We're in a flat roof, we usually just see it, it just blows and keeps going in the end. So like I said, most of our buildings, though, are that flat roof feature. If, but we have a few that did the standing seam just because they're smaller.
Sure. And so is, is that, is that about what, what you could expect from a, from a flat roof before you've got to, you know, put a new membrane or whatever, you know, material you use on there?
I think the warranty itself's like 20, I think we do a 20 to 25-year warranty, I think, is what we do on it. Now it's, you know, proactive, right? So I mean, by year 20, you're not going to obviously get the full dollar amount, but we do an extended length of warranty, a 60-mill EPDM or perhaps a P, you know, EPTO, a PTO white membrane. I think that's what's on station. I think it might be white, but I'm not positive. It's been a while. So, so there's, there's options, you know, whether it's PVC or EPDM or various other things, we'll go through that. But again, that, that spec that we write, we're pretty particular on the manufacturers that we allow because of that training.
Sure. And, and so we don't know if it's, if it'd be $100,000 savings today, but an extra $1 million in, you know, 25 years to, to replace that, or, you know, or, you know, either way.
Yeah, we could ask KA for a cost comparison, just give us some ideas. I, I mean, you're really just replacing the roof over and over and over again. That's kind of the difference. Your upfront costs are going to be the joists to slope that and then the standing seam in the end. So we have to create the slope in the end where a flat roof is just a standard, you know, flat roof bar joist that you'd see in any commercial building, so.
Right. Like, I mean, do you have any, even just like a ballpark, how much?
I don't, I don't, I don't do enough of them to, I don't want to say a number and then be totally off either.
But, but by, by, a, a strong majority of the, the ones you've done are, a strong majority, flat?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions? Counselor Sweeney again, then, please.
Two more questions, and it plays off my counsel. There must be a sophisticated drainage system for water to run off then, right?
Yeah, so it'll be all, all internal drains.
Okay.
You know, so we're not taking it out onto the sidewalks or anything. It's going into the, into the drains, into the ground and out to the pond.
Okay. So-
Counselor, if you get to turn, turn your mic back.
I'm sorry. When you specify the, the building, the roofing membrane, there's good, better, best, I would assume, right?
Yeah.
So that was what I was alluding to before. If it costs $10,000, make up a number, it costs a dollar more, and it's got, we get five more years of life out of it. That's, where is, how was that decision made? Do you, when you spec that, say there's three, you spec the middle one, and that's the spec, right?
Correct. We'd, we'd ask, you know, an opinion of the, obviously, the chief, or if grounds people, you know, which do you prefer? The 60-mill might be the option, but you can pay an up charge and get a higher mill or a higher warranty or any of that stuff.
So when we did that at the time, you'd say the spec is, it's going to give another 20 years of life, and it's going to cost X. And so those numbers are all available, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any last questions for the Fire Chief or our architect? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, item 4.1 is the approval of the June 30 special council meeting minutes.
Motion is by Counselor Elms, and the second by Counselor Herrick is their discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
And 4.2 is the approval of the July 1 regular council meeting minutes.
Motion is also by Counselor Elms, and Herrick is their discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
And 6.1 is a report from Mayor Payne.
Good evening again, counselors. You'll see that we canceled the committee of the whole meeting that was supposed, that was scheduled for tonight. That's really just postponed to the next regular council meeting. The main reason for that was, it's a very crowded agenda tonight, and it will take us a minute to talk about the budget priorities. And among the things we have to talk about tonight, it's, it's going to, that was among the least urgent. We still, we had this long presentation, and we still have to get to a closed session and see pictures of Counselor Elms' new baby. So it's going to be a long night. And the, so, but if, if, you will have already received the packet for that committee, the whole, which contains all of the budget proposals so far. So now those don't have to be final, but I would strongly recommend that you start reviewing those and generate your questions now so that we're prepared to ask them and run a more efficient meeting in two weeks. That said, since there is a delay, we might as well use it. If you read that packet or you've just thought of any new ideas, why don't, why don't we give you till the end of this week? Send any new proposals to my office or to the council president, and we'll just put those in the packet and send those out separately, and then we'll consider them all together. And then I'll, I'll put a pretty tight timeline on you for ranking them. There will be, as usual, some slight changes, I hope improvements to the process, but it won't be too different. I've had some suggestions from counselors on how to improve it. But, but you'll have a sense of what you like, what you don't. So be prepared to, to do some ranking fairly quickly after that meeting. Not a couple hours, more like a couple days. And then I'll release that no later than Monday. So that's, that's all I have for tonight.
All right, item 7.2 is the business of Public Works Committee with a meeting held on July 8. Is there a report from the chair?
Yes, Madam Clerk. I'll, I'll keep it quick, guys. And just a few updates on things going on. Hammond and East Fifth Projects are coming along just fine. We are going to see Tower Avenue repairs starting in the next couple of weeks. Survey crews will be conducting work on Marina Drive near a, near the Causeway. We are just secured a grant that could hopefully extend the Millennium Trail to the Tower Avenue. A lot more planning to come on that. Also moving forward on the water utility acquisition study. Looking to schedule some public meetings regarding the traffic on Ogden, John and Banks Avenue from Belknap to North 28th Street. The action items that we'll see before you tonight, there's a new boiler coming in at the Senior Center, new HVAC system at Nijmegen, designed for new sewers in the Woodstock Bay Area, and repairs to, to the Winter, Winter Street sanitary district area there. That is just a quick little report there. I'll answer any questions if I can. If not, it is my motion to approve the business of the Public Works Committee.
Motion is by Counselor Dean, second by Counselor Ludwig, to approve all three recommendations. Counselor Sweeney?
Could you, I've got a question on 7.2.1, where we're combining the Lou Martin Senior Center costs with the Nijmegen. Do you have a breakdown of those two costs?
That's, I, that's in the memo. You've got it?
I got it, yeah. 65 for the new boiler at the Senior Center and 75 for the HVAC system at Nijmegen.
Is there a reason we combined those, or just?
It was the recommendation of the building's crowned superintendent that bidding them both at the same time would give us a better price than bidding them separately.
Okay.
Thank you.
Further questions or discussion on any of the three recommendations to the Public Works Committee? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving all three, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. The motion carries.
At this time, are there any further committee or commission reports to be made?
The reports, sans recommend, no, no. All we had was the fire hall. Oh, I'm sorry. Counselors, I, if there's no objection, so there are no other committee or commission reports? The, the Plan Commission is my report, but that, all we discussed was the fire hall, which we just discussed at length. So it's my recommendation, rather than going to closed session now, I recommend we just conclude our new business, go into closed session at the end of the meeting. Is there objection to taking those out of order? If not, then by unanimous consent, we will proceed out of order and consider new business immediately.
Item 10.1, I'm recommending approval of miscellaneous licenses pending department approvals.
Motion approved.
Motion by Counselor Herrick was their second. Counselor Elms made the second? Nope. Counselor La Dean. Counselor, motion by Counselor Herrick, second by Counselor La Dean, is their discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item 10.2, I'm recommending approval of an amend the premise for DHL Management doing businesses headed to the Lake Sphere located at 4700 Tower Avenue for an event headed to the Lake Sphere on July 29 through August 2, pending police department approval. I have received fire department approval at this point.
Motion approved.
Motion is by Counselor La Dean, second by Counselor Grasky, is their discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item 10.3, I'm recommending approval of an amend the premise for Jimmy's Saloon located at 1812 Iowa Avenue for Billings Park Days on August 1 and 2, pending police and fire, although I have now also received the fire department approval.
Motion is by Counselor Herrick, second by Counselor Grasky, is their discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
10.4, I'm recommending approval of an original Class A beer and Class C liquor wine-only license application for Andrea Plager doing business as Alchemy located at 2724 North 21st Street for current license period through June 30, pending police department approval.
The motion is by Counselor Elms, second by Counselor Fennessy. Counselor Johnson has expressed his intent to recuse himself. From the questions to the minutes will reflect his recusal. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those, those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
And item 10.5, President Grasky is recommending approval of an allocation of $50,000 from the Public Arts Fund to continue the Superior Public Art Grant Program through the end of 2026.
Motion is by Counselor Elms, second by Counselor Ludwig, is their discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. We have no business by public?
No silence.
Okay. Then counselors, we will, if there's no objection, we will recess for five minutes and reconvene in room 204 to potentially enter into closed session. Is there objection to the recess? Hearing none. We are in recess until, what is it, 7:21? Counselors, could I call you briefly back to order? Apologies. I have to read the, entering into closed session, read the entire thing, right? I haven't done this in a while. Okay, so if you please bear with me, I will bring us back in a regular order. We will, upon a motion and a second, after the recess, on the advice of Attorney Prell, we will convene in closed session so that Attorney Prell can provide advice and options for handling the license renewal application for Cameo Investments II LLC, trade name Centerfold's Cabaret located at 702 Tower Avenue for the license period July 1 through 2025 through June 30, 2026. The council may convene in closed session under Wisconsin Statute Section 19.85 subsection 1, chapters A and G, to discuss the June 17 council meeting wherein renewal of the Class B beer, Class B liquor, and cabaret licenses relevant to Centerfold were contemplate, was contemplated. Such meeting shall be closed under Wisconsin Statute Section 19.85 subsection 1, paragraph A, to deliberate a case which was the subject of any judicial or quasi-judicial trial or hearing before the body. The meeting will also be closed under Wisconsin Statute Section 19.85 subsection 1, paragraph G, to confer with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the motion with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. Upon a motion and second, the council may reconvene into open session under Wisconsin Statute 19.85 subsection 2, to take action, if any, related to the closed session. We are now in recess until 10, or 7:26. Nine, five minutes.
Yeah.
No, there were other people there. But when they let it close session, most people cleared out.
Right. I think so. I turned it on right before I came over and I saw him saying they're gonna go over a lot of orders for that. But.
See, yeah.
Time to get over here.
So how long you been working here, sir?
Um, about a month.
Okay.
The the last two weeks before the liquor license ended, I was there.
Okay.
And these last two weeks, you know, I haven't done any, you know, work, but never sent a fire.
Yeah.
And so. I think it's up in the air. Hopefully we get to stay open. My floor, there would be pretty drastic change from my understanding, so. Yeah, positive changes, I. What's the latest you guys run here for one of these?
Me? One thirty in the morning. Okay. Okay. But that hasn't happened since like two thousand or something, always. Whatever the hell it was, they got Ben Rasmov too, also.
Over here till about one thirty P M. Was it a closed session like this where people were just sitting around?
No, it was. It was what I would call a roving city town square. I don't think I understand.
There's more action going on than. Just sitting around. That's pretty serious, because it's.
You know, the council will have a million questions for me during. That's just how it goes.
It's that they're not committed to. Hey, you got three minutes to ask your question. Can you just go behind? Andrew, which now you had to volunteer for this type of stuff?
Well, volunteer is not exactly the word that I'm using.
Okay.
John's at a training and so is Lori.
Oh, okay.
So.
Oh, you got drafted?
I did, but happy to help. I'm always here anyways unless I'm out of town, so.
What are you doing?
Running.
What are you doing?
I'm running the camera systems.
Oh, okay.
But normally that would be the deputy clerk's job, but she is at a.
Could you do overtime at least?
Um, we don't have overtime, mainly in traditional sense, um, but I can pay, I can flex some time off later if we're working extra today.
That's cool.
They keep going into this, we got meeting pops Friday.
Yeah.
I was really hoping this wouldn't run pretty well, but.
To me, I'm thinking this has a lot more to do with the fact that they pushed it off, took the night. I don't know personally, but they were concerned about it after last meeting, before we do all of that.
I think, I think it would have been much cleaner if you'd have put in a new application, had it. Yeah, of course. But I wouldn't wanna do those things twice either, just couple. Together.
Yeah, if anyone was a little more involved with what was going on, it would be like now, but. Not pretty to that caliber of information, but he's able to strike a deal. And he's a good candidate for it. Got to be the guy who can help you, who has a successful club down there. Um, as well, taking those kind of changes and, I don't know, if he'd like a partnership or sale or a rebrand, I don't know, he would be up. It's a good opportunity for the city because the way his club is run down there. It's above the standards of how the club's around here, or how it runs, and so. Were you here last meeting?
No, I was gonna make you.
I, uh, I didn't know you had to sign up before to be able to say something, so they closed the meeting, and I stood up and tried to say something. Told them, we have the hours. We've been open one hundred fifty, I've been a test for that. So. And I told them, if you deal, then make sure that it's. Always a good partnership with the city. Go above and beyond the standards and set the standards of how these kind of partnerships operate. Working on the work on the record, but we still have to say something, so. Um, it's worked out. It's like they're offering.
Are you still delivering for your, you know, kind of?
No. Um. So when. When were you there, was that April, I think it was?
I think it was, yeah.
Might have been March, because it was something like March for me, though, that's my address, I think.
Yeah, that may have been, yeah, yeah.
So. End of. Middle of April, my grandma passed away. When she passed away, I asked Molly, I said, when I finish the deliveries, can I come back, drop my stuff off and go? For the rest of the week, she says, maybe around that extra hour, do you want stuff, do you want people or whatnot? And she said, okay. And that was on like the Monday or Tuesday, and then on Thursday, I left when I left off doing the deliveries. And I get a voicemail from Dale saying I abandoned my position, I didn't have permission to go home, and they fired me.
Hmm.
And right before that, a couple days before. I was getting this sick feeling like, oh, something wasn't right. So I turned on my phone when we recorded the conversation with Molly. She'd been telling me to show up ten minutes early. And when says, well, how come you showing up now? Um, like, wait, well, you actually respond by saying, how come you're showing up super early? Because everyone's showing up at nine thirty, you start at ten. And you don't get paid till ten. So I started showing up at nine fifteen, something that Molly agreed that I should do. And I have a recording saying that you showing up ten minutes before you start is becoming a problem.
Well, if they're not paying you, they, that's wage stuff. If you're there and they're not paying you for your checks, that's wage stuff.
So my first paycheck, um, I wrote homeless to my address, because I technically am. And they told us we can't do that, so I knew they would come talk to me. And I also put my clock in time at nine thirty, because I'm there at nine thirty every day. And then they didn't wanna talk about that. So when they called me in, they had a brand new time sheet written up for me. With hours adjusted, already signed before I even did it. And I got a photo of those three time sheets put next to each other before Molly just threw it out, my original one. He just swatted it, saying, oh, you get paid starting at ten. That definitely. I also took photos of the cigarette burns on the afters, or on the trays, because people were using them as afters. And they were telling us not to show them up, you know? That went back after hours, or not, you could add that fire, a lot of howling, or that fire, that's an afro, with the. Cigarette burns on afters, pile and stack and pile the trays for the next day. Needless to say, I've been a long way to go.
Yeah.
And, um, Brian, he gets something prepared for, and he does have the workforce development people. A home program, I don't know, I might have to bring it to the city's H R, because it's a city loan program, in my understanding, if they're doing that kind of wage stuff. I don't know.
No, no, uh, see your connections, your friend Clark, or check them.
My pageants went through to the city. We had a city auditor auditing our case stuff, is what they were saying. They had someone come into the college and speak to us and, like, instruct us on how to build these out, saying they're federal forms, and they have to be filled out in a very specific way. And I, I kinda almost got into it with them then, because she's helping, I couldn't put homeless as an address. Like, what do you mean?
Yeah. I think, does he have any, did you resume your connections, does he start?
Uh, not to my knowledge, but I guess I don't know all the ins and outs, I've never heard anybody over HR mention it, direct.
I don't know.
Maybe you know me?
Or, yeah, the county, I mean, the county, I'm sorry, I was at the city. Yeah, I like to say county the whole time, it's a county program. Because it's a county wide thing, it's a federal funding. So, yeah, not city, county, I mean, not like a county A R. I think that's what it was, they had someone from the county, called us, and told us about it. She was walking up to the audience, because she gets audited. That makes sense very good.
Yeah.
Shelley, you hung with us?
Yeah, yeah.
It feels good, doesn't it?
No.
Oh, you don't like it? It's just working, yeah.
I like it.
Maybe it was getting a little closed and stuff in there.
Yeah.
It was, yeah.
Yeah. Is that Brian's?
No, but the same, I mean, I mean, you're right, some of the, I don't think that applies. No, but I would, I do watch, and I would, oh, maybe I just wanted to, I don't know. Nobody's likely to get.
Am I allowed to say something before you guys make these decisions?
Yeah.
I'll call him, yeah. I'll double check.
Good.
Oh, 'cause I'm hitting. Councilor Johnson, can you hear us? He probably bailed. Okay, it is. It is nine twelve P M. I will call the council back to order in open session. Uh, we had a motion and second to reconvene in open session. The chair recognizes Councilor Graski.
Um, yes, I'd like to make a motion to renew the license pending the demonstration by the licensee to the city attorney and the city clerk. That the licensee has satisfactorily met the requirements of the renewal.
Is there a second to the motion? The motion is by Councilor Graski, it's second by Councilor Sweeney. Uh, Councilor Johnson, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, thank you. If the council doesn't object with one person that would like to speak in public comment on this motion, is there any, is there any objection? Please approach the podium, you'll be, uh, we'll turn on the mic for you, you'll have exactly three minutes to speak. I'll give you a thirty second warning as, as you approach the end of your time. Please, uh, state your name, uh, and where you live for the record for the minutes.
Sure. Uh, my name is Joe Eishens, and I am a resident of Superior. I have been an employee with Centerfolds since about mid-June. Um, and that was during the crunch time in which the, the only issue seemingly at that time was the required hours. I, I can attest that we did have the one hundred and fifty hours in and completed before the liquor license was suspended. Also, if given the opportunity, we are willing to make major changes in how that establishment is run. We are willing to go above and beyond what the city wants for how the expectations are that these kind of facilities are operated. We're gonna go above and beyond, and we wanna form a good partnership with the city. So that we can set the standards of what you guys wanna expect if you were to go forward with any other organizations of this type. I'm, I'm here hoping that I get to keep a job tonight. Been wondering what's going on for the last couple of weeks. It's a little nervous, but thank you for your time and the opportunity to say something.
Thank you. Okay, councilors, the effect of the question, if adopted, will be in. If the licensee presents evidence to the satisfaction of the city attorney and the city clerk that all of the requirements of the license have been met. At that time, the administration will consider the license to be renewed. That is the effect of the motion. Discussion on the motion. If there is no discussion on the motion, I will take a voice vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no?
No.
In the opinion of the chair, the motion carries. Councilors, we have no further business, and we are adjourned. Councilor, could you bring the motion back up for Heidi?